Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting of the Finance Subcommittee to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Chair Personata?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Three present.
Also joining us tonight is the Superintendent, Dr. Kelfawi, and the Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Gary Frisch, and Committeeman Bob Hoey is in the house. We'll go by the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is to discuss the 2017-2018 budget process, the approvals and the reductions. On May 17th, the School Committee adopted a budget in the amount of $162,942-- $162 million, thank you, $942,846. What this reflected was an expected inclusion of $610,000 from the Senate version of the budget, along with a promise of $250,000 from the city. On May 30th, the City Council adopted a budget of $162,73,324, with a verbal commitment from Manager Murphy for $250,000 once the free cash or the tax lien was certified. At the June 21st School Committee meeting, on the recommendation from Mr. Frisch, the School Committee approved a motion to direct the Superintendent to request that the City Council approve a budget amendment of $869,522 to increase the school department appropriation. And on that is where I want to begin with the Superintendent, Mr. Frisch. In our School Committee policy handbook, as well as, I believe, state law, it is-- or I charter, anyway, the authority for the final school budget lies with the City Council. Whatever they vote is the appropriation is-- I think I saw Superintendent Kelfawi mention in one of the meetings to Mr. Gendron, "You can make it $2 million, but if they don't appropriate it, you're not gonna get it." So why on the-- at the 21st meeting, with only nine days left in the year, did we suggest to try to get the whole $800,000 rather than suggesting that we may need to do-- may need to do cuts? And as I said, the budget adoption procedure is right in the policy of the School Committee. So I want to make something clear. I am not holding the Superintendent and the administration for being derelict in any way. I think the communication could have been better, but I think the School Committee also has a responsibility. Under every form, the School Committee has three responsibilities. We hire a Superintendent, we vote and maintain and oversee the budget, and we set policy. And to me, the budget is one of the biggest things that the School Committee has any say over. You know, we don't get involved, at least we shouldn't get involved, in who gets hired, for what positions. We shouldn't care what the City Manager or the police do. What we need to concentrate on is our areas that we're responsible for. But I would hope that leadership and some direction would be more stronger. And I don't want to use the term "you have to babysit us." We shouldn't require babysitting. We should know what our responsibilities are. But I listened to the replay of the June 21st meeting today in my office, and the owner walked in and said, "Most people listen to a radio. What are you listening to?" And there was very little discussion. There was no discussion. It came up for a vote, and the School Committee voted to support asking the Council, "Why wasn't-- why didn't you recommend that we needed to cut or remind the School Committee that they couldn't put in or submit or, you know, approve a budget that was higher than what the City Council voted for? Either one is fine."
Yeah. You know, I think-- I don't recall exactly the details, because this is a ghost's bit. We're back then. But I think more than once, I had mentioned it several times, that at the end of the day, we have to agree with whatever the city appropriations are. But I think the hope at that time was really for the city to increase its appropriation. We really strongly believed in that, that they should and they would too. Because one of the things that you have to go back and understand, how did we end up having to cut last year? And part of the reason that we ended up cutting last year, even though on the surface the city seems to have held its contribution level, but it wasn't really level because the transportation cost, which is really not our cost at all, was borne by us, the increase in transportation. So we felt very strongly that in total fairness, that the city should be absorbing that additional cost of transportation, because it's a city cost, it's not a school cost. And if you look back, and I don't remember the-- exactly the details, obviously, the exact numbers, at that time, the transportation cost was almost by as much high-- as much higher. And we felt that, yes, the city is giving us level funding, but when you start peeling that off, you know, the increase to transportation, which is really not our cost, then it's equivalent to just cutting us by that much. So we felt very strongly, and at that time, we truly believed it, that, you know, we should really be talking to the city and hopefully the School Committee supporting that, that we should try to get-- try to convince the city to try to give us, you know, amend and try to give us more funding. So that was the belief. And we all went, I believe, if I don't remember the date, we went out and I talked to the City Manager with, you know, his CFO and my CFO, and I know the School Committee went and talked to the City Council at the meeting, and--
Yeah, that was the May 30th meeting.
Yeah, we were not successful in-- and there were a lot of other discussions later, I'm sure. We just were not successful. But I think at that time, we were just hoping that they may actually come back to us and give us-- because they-- we made them very much aware in a previous meeting, meaning they, the City Manager and the CFO, that the budget that we had set up, even though with all the cuts that we had to absorb already, were really all set, and it's kind of really late now to be cutting that much money, because we just don't have the places to cut from. Because the biggest places you cut from, which would be salaries, it would have been for the most part late because of the union agreements that we have, that you have to notify them of cuts before a certain time. So that would have left only the unaffiliated, which is a very shallow pool, where to cut from. So that was, we were really hoping to the last minute, that they would do something about it. And the reason also that motivated us, that they would do something about it, if you recall, the year prior, we had held in excess at the end of the year, we had ended up the year with an excess budget. We ended up with about 600 or slightly more thousand, because we were anticipating, we had had the cuts of the Paris for kindergarten, which were 500-plus, so we had left the surplus to cover it. And that surplus legally has to go back to the city at the end of the year. And we knew that they had the money. It's not that they didn't have the money. We knew they had at least the money that they just got from us. So we were very confident at that time, that knowing that we have been hit with cuts and transportation was higher, that the least they could do is at least help us back with the fund that they just took from us. But that didn't happen.
Because the city, I'm sure, is looking at it, is that they-- and we can debate the charges, maintenance of effort charges, that they hit us with, but on paper, they exceed net school spending. And so I'm sure their feeling was, you know, "We've exceeded net school spending by six or eight million dollars," you know. On June 22nd, now, backing up a little bit, Mayor Kennedy had brought up to the City Council a motion to try to get this resolved on June 13th, prior to the June 21st School Committee meeting. Unfortunately, that wasn't responded to until what would be the June 27th Council meeting, but in the packet that was out on June 22nd, the mayor received a letter from the City Manager informing him that the city was staying with their $162,000-- $162,73,324. He actually put the commitment of $250,000 into writing, but that they were not only going to stay with that, and they promised that any additional money from Chapter 70, because at that point, the state had not approved the budget yet, would go to the city. I could find nothing that showed that Mayor Kennedy shared that information with the rest of the City Council, because in that letter, which I, you know, which I saw right online, and it states very clearly in the Council packet, that the city had every intention of putting into the munis budget, the $162 million that they had voted on, and for the members who came in later. Our policy manual, the policy manual of the School Committee, clearly states that, you know, we recognize the fact that the final budget is up to the City Council. That final appropriation always is up to them. And so at that point, for whatever reason, no one called for a special meeting to address the budget that had to be reduced. That was not addressed. For whatever reason, the mayor, yourself, whoever could have called a special meeting, none was called. There was a special meeting called on the 23rd for the following Wednesday, on the 28th for the location, for the School Committee to vote on the location of the high school, but not the budget. On June 27th, the administration submitted a budget to the city auditor in the amount of $162,73,324, which is what the City Council appropriated. If you look, and I'll be very honest with you, Mr. Superintendent, when I first found that out, when I first discovered that, my initial reaction was that you overstepped your boundary, that you did not respect the role of the School Committee. And I firmly believed that right up until late Monday afternoon, when I got a phone call from the Department of Revenue, because I had called them and I had contacted Desi also. Ted Pandos refers to me as an attorney. Maybe he shouldn't refer to me as an investigator, because I dig into it. But the DOR was very specific and said to me, "Before you think that something was amiss, check your own policy and procedure manual." So I did that. In addition to finding what I had found earlier, where our policy manual, you know, has the-- that the City Council is the adoption for the final number, whether we like it or not, and generally, we always wish it was more. There is a policy in our policy manual that states, "When action must be taken within the school system, where the committee has provided no guides for administrative action, the Superintendent will have power to act. The Superintendent's decision, however, will be subject to review by the School Committee." I believe that when you acted on the 27th, you did so within the guidelines of our own policy manual. Up until Monday afternoon, I didn't think that was the case. And I was fully expecting to end this meeting with a recommendation to eliminate both of your positions, because I didn't think you respected the role of the School Committee, until I did my homework. And I gotta tell you, from what I found, I actually think that you kind of went the opposite way and was protecting the School Committee. Because the manager had said, he was gonna put that budget in, no matter what. And all you did was put the budget in that had to be put in, and what you did was you eliminated the 610 of the Senate version and the 250 that was a verbal promise from the City Manager, to meet, to put the budget in line. And again, it took me up until late Monday afternoon to figure all this out, because it is-- all the public records aren't as clear and easy to find unless you kind of take some time to dig in and, again, talk with the Department of Revenue and Desi, who, I have to tell you, were so willing to walk me through all this and help me to understand the process. So when you submitted that budget, you did so doing what the law requires you to do, and what our own policy manual, in my opinion, requires you to do. I could ask and go back and say, "Why didn't you, then in July, explain it more clearly? Why, when the cuts were made in August for the 610, it wasn't done more clearly?" Again, my own opinion at this point is, you were protecting that School Committee. I think you should have been more communit-- you know, it was funny, I listened to the June 21st meeting, and the word "communication" came up over and over again. I wish you had been communicating clearer with the School Committee in July at your meeting, to tell them that you had submitted that budget under our policy manual, and that we have to make cuts and we have to transfer the money. The communication has to be better. We can't allow this kind of communication to go on, because on the outside, at first glance, unless somebody spends some time digging into this, on paper, it looks bad, when the truth is, I think you did a better job than the School Committee did doing their job. Because they should have been all over this. They should have known that we can't submit a budget more than what the city votes for, and that we have to vote on a budget by June 30th. Now, I don't know why, when we did that meeting for the cuts, there were-- the first one was August 16th, and then it was August 21st was the follow-up, where they were still talking about, you know, the guidance position at the high school, that the School Committee didn't want cut, and some other cuts that were made. Those were actually reductions. We did not eliminate that $610,000. That $610,000 is still in the budget. The money is there. So moving on now to the second part of the agenda, transfers to cover required salary increases. It is my understanding, after talking with Desi and the DOR, that the $610,000 that the previous School Committee voted in as reductions, will have to be brought before this School Committee as a transfer, to transfer into the suspense account, coming from all those different areas that were cut. We will then have to have a second transfer, which includes the 250 that the city gave us, to then put it to the salary and wages accounts, to cover the increases that the School Committee agreed to. Am I so far on the correct path, Mr. Superintendent, or Gary?
No, go ahead.
And then I believe, again, from talking with the Department of Revenue, that I'm going to make a motion tonight with the Subcommittee, that we recommend to the entire committee that the bottom line of the budget was never voted on. As a matter of fact, because we only had a verbal commitment from the City Manager, if you had voted on a budget that included that 250, we would have been out of compliance. So after talking with the Department of Revenue, I believe we have to vote on a new bottom-line budget with the $250,000 that the city has now given us, to make us whole and vote on that, and then we have to request the mayor to ask the City Council to also vote on that bottom line. Because even if we vote on it, and we increase the budget so that our final number for the current year would be $162,323,324, the city still shows only 162,073,324. And if we were to spend that 250 without the Council actually voting on it, it looks like we exceeded our budget. Again, am I correct in understanding this? Either one.
I think-- no, no, I think you're correct. We've said all of that, and I think we would absolutely have to before June 30. That's the law. And I'm happy that you checked the law and you found out that we were correct, and we didn't do anything wrong. I knew I didn't do, we didn't do anything wrong, because of another law that is also very clear, that says, "We cannot spend $1 more than the School Committee budget, but we can spend less." And that happened the year prior, where we ended up with 600 and turned it over. So I knew all along, we were very clear, and I did that, and I'm glad we're all reaching the same conclusion. But you're absolutely correct. Before June 30, we have to have the two votes that need to take place. The vote of the School Committee to raise our-- to have our budget to be 250,000 above what the city appropriation, initial appropriation was, because they gave us 250. And they need to raise their side as well, so that the two budgets are the same, and they will be the same as what we actually spent. Because if you don't do that, you will, after June 30, when we do the end-of-year report, it will show that the schools would have spent $250,000 more than they were authorized by the city. And that would be trouble, and we don't want that.
However, all that being said, and again, re-listening to some of the old School Committee meetings, communication has to improve both ways. We need to be-- ask you the questions that need to be asked. It does not have to be, "I pick up the phone or I email you." We are elected officials. We can put that in the form of a motion and ask on the floor. But we also need you to help-- you're the experts in this field. We're not. We all have, you know, other occupations that we do. So we need you to remind us that the law says you can't spend a penny more, that you have to do whatever the City Council says is the bottom line, and that we have to have that in by this day. We need you to be more proactive in communicating with us, because that's what we pay you for. We pay you to lead the system and help lead us in the direction we need to go. And by leaving that out, not letting the School Committee know that the budget was submitted, makes us as members look bad. I just put in a whole lot of time that could easily have been avoided. It's something I like to do. But the communication has to be there, and we need to continue to work on that. Mr. Dakota, Mr. Lay, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, no. Do you want me to make a motion that we do--
Well, before we do that, we have in attendance tonight some people in the audience. We also have Mr. Hoey, Ms. Martin, and Ms. Dougherty, who are all here. If they would like to add anything, give them an opportunity. Mr. Hoey? Mr. Hoey?
I'd like to just say something short and sweet. One, I think you just missed on one more function that we have, and that's just negotiating contracts. Something else we do. You said three of them. I think we have four of them. I think this was a great meeting. But I do wanna say, we paid the Superintendent and Gary big bucks to watch our backs. And I think, I know by the law, or Desi, after listening to you, I feel, if I'm wrong, correct me, that if the Superintendent sees something wrong like that, he has the right to lower the budget. But he doesn't have the right to raise the budget without us. Is that, is that the way you explain it?
No, he can't arbitrarily lower the budget. But he can submit a budget that is in line, because it had to be submitted. Because if we did not submit the budget on the 27th, it takes the auditor roughly three days to get every line item. Because, as you know, we have so many different line items and accounts that we need to be prepared to be able to be functioning and write checks and pay bills July 1st on the next fiscal year. So, it has to be submitted in time to do that. You know, we can, we can, I could beat them up for not calling a special meeting. I could beat the mayor up for not calling a special meeting. It does no good at this point to beat anybody up. Okay, I think both sides equally were, you know, doing a lot of things. And it doesn't, it's no excuse. No matter what we're doing, we need to keep our eye focused on what we should be doing. And for the School Committee, you know, the budget is a huge piece of our responsibility. So, you know, moving forward--
If I may, I just wanna add one clarification to this. Is that, and I did mention it to you at the beginning of the meeting, is before the meeting started, that I think, in retrospect, the School Committee could not have yet voted on a final figure, because we had the promise from the city manager to get 250. We had to wait until we get it. And then, we only got the 250 when--
January.
The end of January. So, it was only after this January that we would have had to be able to do the transfers, which I think we came in with the transfers. Following the transfers, we would have had to vote on our bottom line and then request the city, the council, that they vote on their bottom line. So, I think we could have, if voted, but we would still be out of line, because we would have voted, what?
Actually, if you had voted on the bottom-line budget, that you submitted it minus the money that you have taken out of the suspense account, both the 610 and the 250, it was out of the suspense account. So, you would have been in compliance. And then, with the 250, you would have then had to transfer.
Right, we would have had to take a vote again.
You would still have to make the cuts for the 610. So, again, it's behind us now. We have to make sure we do our due diligence. And especially, I mean, we have in tonight's packet the information that, you know, the city is cutting us $2.5 million in cash contribution. And one of my questions to the mayor when he comes is, we voted as a School Committee in January. And I believe it was a unanimous vote to request that the city take the cost of transportation and put it in as a separate line item, so that everyone sees the exact dollar amount that they're giving us in cash. Because it's not $15 million. Transportation is almost $8 million. So, we're getting about $7 million as a cash contribution from the city. And in the Powers and Sullivan report that was discussed last night at the City Council meeting, it shows that 89% of our budget comes from Chapter 70. The city of Lowell is, School Department is really run by the state. Our bulk comes from the state. And when you look at the city only contributing $7 million in cash, I think that's outrageous. I think the city should give us a $15 million in cash and put the $7 million into a transportation account, because it's on the city's side. That's where transportation is supposed to be. And we voted for that. I don't know why the mayor did not bring that forward. We'll have to ask him. Because we voted as a unanimous group to ask them to do that going forward, so.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Nutter, I'm so glad that you brought this into our attention. It has been only two-plus months into the term. And to have you very knowledgeable about this thing and bring us into this attention, I really appreciate it. I learned a great deal since I've been talking to you a couple of times about it. So, question is, what did you wanna vote on tonight?
So, I would, I would make a motion that we request that the committee, the whole School Committee, takes a vote tonight. I believe we can do this tonight, correct, Mr. Superintendent? To adopt the bottom-line budget figure That is the amount of the 162,073,324 that the City Council approved, along with the additional 250,000 that the city manager gave us in January.
So, if we don't vote on it tonight, what happens? Is it, are we too late to--
We have to--
Are we trying to catch up, doing catch-up, or--
It's pretty much catching up. We have to, by law, have this done, as the Superintendent said and according to the DOR, before June 30th.
Before June 30?
Before June 30.
Of '18 or of '17?
This year.
Of '18, so we still have time, in a way.
Yeah, but we, you know, we can do it tonight--
If I may, I wanna add some information. I think Mr. Fresh mentioned it last time briefly. We're still waiting for the city to, they're working out to give us some funding that they owe us, which is funding that in the past had come to us in the form of school choice funding directly to a revolving account. Last year, because I'm not really sure why, it either came after the timeline or something, that school funding was not remitted the same way. So, it's been held by the city, but it's really school money. The second amount that they need to give us is some E-rate funding that also should have gone, but they have new laws that have been entered into state on how you treat E-rate funding. So, the two fundings were, we were requested by the CFO of the city, they're school monies. But they want us, because of the new laws and regulations, they want it to be in the form of appropriations. So, if you take the vote tonight, it's fine. But once we get those appropriations voted, you would have to retake a new vote because of a new appropriation. So, it's your choice. You can do it tonight and then wait for those appropriations when they come in. You can take another vote as well to raise it again one more time. Or you can wait until then, whatever you want. It's the same.
I think it makes sense at this point just to wait. And do we have any idea when? As long as we can get it before the June 30th deadline.
They promised it they will. They just needed to go through a process where they're supposed to give us exactly the amount, and we bring it to the School Committee. The School Committee has to vote on the appropriation request. And then, we take it to the City Council, and the City Council has to approve the appropriation.
Okay. So, I think we will just close this meeting then without asking for that vote. And just, when we do the report, it'll just be a report of progress. All right. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Mary, we don't need a roll call, right? Okay. Oh, Andy, would you make a motion to report this as a report of progress?
I'm sorry, to do what?
To have this meeting go in as a report of progress.
I make that motion.
Mr. Lay, would you second it?
I second it.
All in favor? Do we need a roll call vote on that? No, okay. The meeting is now adjourned.